Well, that's why we get everything done now and sit back and enjoy the ride.
Call to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, June 4th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Next item is Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, June 1st. Agenda is posted at the public office, library, and city hall.
Thank you. Next item is council acceptance of the agenda. Would anybody object to moving the approval of the event packet for FFA to the top of the finance?
I have no objection. I would make motion to accept the agenda, moving FFA discussion up to number six, seven? Five?
Seven, A1.
Seven?
There you go.
There you go.
Some are up there at the top of finance.
I'll second that.
That's okay with everybody. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Personal appearances. Anyone in the audience that wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, move on to the minutes from May 21st.
Motion to approve minutes of May 21st council meeting.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now to finance with Mark.
All right. I am going to make a motion to approve a public event packet for the Edgerton FFA alumni for truck and tractor pull and consider waiving the fees.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second so that we have to, I guess, discuss the police overtime.
But that's not what the motion was.
Is your motion to waive the fees? Is that what your motion is?
Was to just, yeah, I guess, without necessarily including anything with the police department at this point.
Okay. So, just for clarification, you said consider waiving the fees. So was your motion to waive the fees?
And shouldn't it be the same motion that came from finance? That should come to council? Okay.
No, you can do it, don't. It does not have to.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be the same motion as finance. Someone can make any motion they wish at this point.
Okay.
They can, but you should at least report what happened at finance.
Yes.
Okay. I was just gonna make a motion in a second to get discussion going on so we can discuss what happened at finance. I guess that's where my head was.
Thank you.
And I think that's fine.
That's a second.
So where does that leave us now?
Doug, you would give your report from finance.
Okay, so, at finance, it came up that the police chief is requesting to have a couple officers available at the tractor pull. So, we just wanted to bring it forward here so that anybody with the tractor pull organization can have discussion on it, so...
Well, and probably what it means is paying for the officers.
Or not.
Or not. Yeah, I meant, but that's the issue, is the amount of the police coverage.
Typically, just so you know, most events pay for half of the overtime for police. One event pays, elects to pay for the entire police overtime? So that is, is that consistent with, is that a fair summary of all the other events, Cindy, that's half except for the fire district?
Yes, the only event that police coverage is provided that they don't pay is the Fourth of July celebration.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected then.
And the amount where you were, what the amount is? I think chief quoted, what, $660.84 for two officers times six hours.
So half of that, if it were like many other events, half of that would be the responsibility of your organization.
So, first question, the motion on the floor is to waive the fees of the officers or just the event fees?
The event fees in general. I guess my intention was to not have the, any consideration on behalf of the police as if normally. So now we can go forward and if you feel, you know, I wanted to ask see if you feel there's a need for police and then we'll go from there.
First, for the record, my name is Karen Lee, 10316 North Washington Road in Edgerton. I'm a member of the Edgerton FFA alumni, secretary with the organization and helped with the tractor pull for many years. In fact, that's why I became a member of the Edgerton FFA alumni and then ultimately ended up in this community too. So, I, so it's near and dear to me, but I guess my first question is, what has changed of our event from previous years to have a police presence be requested that day?
I feel it's grown. It goes longer than it used to, I feel, and just keeping it under control. It's a lot of people, it's a lot of beer. To make sure that your event is as safe as everyone else's.
We certainly appreciate that. We wanted to be as safe as one day. I guess to me, our attendance kind of upsets a little bit. We don't see a lot of growth with it. And even the timing, we've run a lot later before we're done earlier than what we used to be. We used to have to really hurry up and get done before the sun went down because there's no lights out there. And now we're getting done quite a few hours earlier than what we did. Just shortening, we have fewer trucks that come in for our spectator part and our tractor classes we shortened on to make the day a little bit shorter. Something to keep in mind too with our attendance, we have about 100 people that come that participate in our event, which means they're driving tractors or driving trucks on the track. Those people are not consuming alcohol for the day. They cannot, they will not, they are going to be driving former vehicles. So they're kind of eliminated out of that drinking pool per se. Also, it's a daytime event, unlike some other events we have in the area which are more evening. It's very family friendly. A portion of our event is small children. It's Father's Day, so people are coming as families. And that's where we just don't really feel that we necessarily need a police presence to help with the day because we do try, we feel it's not heavily, that it involves a lot of drinking. I don't believe we've had any prior instances in the past. We follow the rules by having our licensed bartender at point of sale. And this year too, because of the changes at the park, the fence around the entire park, we are now going to fence in the track area. The whole event area will have a fence to be able to better monitor the people who are coming and going into the event through standard points along the fence. We will have people stationed there. So, we feel that we're trying to keep it as safe as possible ourselves too, to help minimize the need for the police and overtime and working on a Sunday because we realize how taxing that can be after a long week of work already.
So, your organization does not feel the need for a police presence, is that what? Okay.
I would say though that the council does feel it is necessary and Chief Cooper tends as well that we would then also ask that you consider reducing those fees. Of course, we don't think it needs to be there, but if you do, those fees are hefty and we're a nonprofit organization that invests the money we make back into the needed here. So if we have to incur any fees, that means we're going to spend less than, we'll consider that, which would be a shame to the people that are involved.
So, Mark, do we need another motion then for the police or do you want to tie it together with the original?
Well, that's kind of why I went about doing it this way is if there isn't, if we don't feel we need the police included in the motion, then the motion would be as it stands, correct? It would just carry on as it normally would? Okay. So that's, I guess, why I did it that way.
Do you mean, police not included, not being out there at all or not?
Just not being, the cost of the police not being involved with the organizers. So I guess if Tom feels he needs police out there, he could place them out there and the cost would not go on to the organizers of the event.
Would you be giving the chief direction regarding whether or not you're gonna pay the overtime then?
Right.
Would there be a separate motion? Would that be your intention?
I guess that's a good question, so...
And I also have a question. If there's not two officers directly positioned there, would you, I mean, your officers would certainly be driving through the park occasionally, right, like you do with the rest of the city?
Looking ahead at the schedule that day, it's minimal coverage, so I wouldn't guarantee a squad even seeing the park that day.
So, it's minimal coverage because?
It's the way scheduling is.
Oh, it's because, based on the schedule?
Right.
But if that's the case, then you'd have to call in two more, okay. Well, see, I hate to have FFA eat that because you've got a minimal schedule personnel, right? I mean, that's kind of how it sounds that, then, because it's a minimal schedule.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna amend my motion if I could. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the public event packet for the Edgerton FFA alumni for the truck and tractor pull and consider waiving the fees and not request a police presence at the park.
Second that motion.
Okay, you threw considering there again.
So you're waiving the fees? You're not considering the waiving of the fees, you're waiving?
Correct, waiving the fees. Let me do it one more time. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the public event packet for the Edgerton FFA alumni for the truck and tractor pull, waive the fees, and not request a police presence.
And again, I'll second that.
As I was saying, by not requesting police presence, I'm assuming you mean not request additional police be staffed there?
Correct. Let me change that to not require police presence.
Not require, okay.
Yes, because certainly we would want police presence there, but you're not paying overtime.
Right, we're not, we're not telling them not to be there or to not show up.
Clear, no.
I won't be sure of that, but...
So, no two extra officers on overtime to be assigned out there for that day?
Correct.
I haven't been there for, well, last year it got rained out. Haven't been there for a couple of years and, like you say, it is a daytime thing. We have no record of any violations out there that, that anyone knows of here, so... I have to agree with Mark on that. So, everybody know what the motion says now?
This is an amendment, so we're gonna have to vote.
Amendment first?
Amendment first and then, depending how that does, vote on the final motion.
So the amendment is just to take out the police overtime?
Correct. Okay. Is that how I interpret what has been requested? Yes.
Any further discussion on that?
We're basically just voting on the words "not require police presence" for the, as an amendment, and then we'll go back to the original and add that in.
Okay, correct.
Okay, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now what was the original motion? Because if we made an amendment to the original motion, don't that eliminate the original motion?
No, this is, now the motion before you is to approve the event packet waiving the fees and not requiring police presence.
Right. Motion is amended. Putting the two together. Okay.
Well, it was made in second and now it's before the, you can have further discussion or you can move to amended further or you can call the question.
Any, any further discussion on approving the packet as amended? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
But, hope the weather's good.
Yes, because you had to cancel it twice, I believe, in the last several years, haven't you?
Three times. We're taking up a new brain injury. Do we need the beer license also on the agenda?
That's all been passed.
Want to move that up too?
Oh, that's coming next.
Forgot about moving that one up. Shouldn't be an issue, but...
Can we move it up or should we just put it?
Move it up.
We're on that topic. Council has control of its agenda. If you wish to, by unanimous consent, amend the agenda, I think that'd be appropriate.
So is the motion needed then?
Not if it's by you unanimous consent, but...
Okay.
Aye.
I'm in favor of moving it.
Go on to that number four underneath. Number four.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary Class B license for the Edgerton FFA alumni on June 17th, 2018.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for stopping down.
June 17th, we started 11:30, first closed.
All right. Thanks for stopping.
All right. So now I'm back to the top here.
If you want to.
I dare you to go backwards through the whole thing.
All right. I will make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $220,195.61.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, two, approval of licenses. All these licenses to follow have been checked in the, with a background check and have been okayed. So what I would like to do is when I make a motion, just approve the ones under that bullet point without reading them all. So if anybody is to object, then they could object after the motion in a second. So, 2A, Class B beer license renewal for Mario's Italian, I'm gonna make a motion to approve a Class B beer license renewal for Mario's Italian Restaurant LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2B, Class B combination liquor and beer license renewal for the listed below.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes, sorry.
I'll second. Any discussion? Everybody can read them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2C, I'll make a motion to approve a Class A beer license renewal for the two listed below.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2D, I'll make a motion to approve a Class A combination liquor and beer license renewal for the ones listed below.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2E, make a motion to approve a cigarette and tobacco license for those listed below.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2F, I'll make a motion to approve dance hall permits for the businesses listed below.
Second. You guys like to dance?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
2G, I'll make a motion to approve a sandwich board permits for the businesses listed below.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
H, I'll make a motion to approve a private property on public sidewalk permit for Burns Full Service LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I'm gonna skip, or go beyond the next two because we already dealt with them, so I'll go down to line item five. I'll make a motion to approve bids for the street crack ceiling to crack filling services in the amount of a buck twenty-five per pound.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Six, I'll make a motion to approve bids for the police department computer server not to exceed $5,575.
Second. Any discussion?
Who was the second?
Roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve a contract with Cedar Corp for the Veterans Building awning project for a cost of $11,000 for seeking bids for both solid surface and lured awnings.
Second. Any discussion? Let's get the second.
Yep.
Roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All I have from my...
Thank you. Plan Commission, we have a couple of things on here.
You want me to take it?
Sure, if you want to.
Okay, we met last week, I can't remember which date it was. Like, I'd like to make a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of City of Edgerton Ordinance 18-05, amend Section 22.210, official zoning map of the City of Edgerton parcel located at 562 Thompson Drive.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'd like to make a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 09-18 approving the plot, excuse me, plot of survey to adjust lot lines for the parcels located at 708 and 710 West Rollins Street and 202 North Third Streets.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick comment, it's nice to see this finally got, you know, resolved. It was so complicated, you know, throughout the years, remember all that? So, good deal.
What else? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else in plan, did we?
No, I think that was it.
Meeting coming up on the 13th. Fire district.
Okay, we have a fire district meeting coming up a week from Thursday, I believe that's the 14th. However, we have Chief Pickering here to give us a couple of brief updates.
A couple of things, a lot of good activities and I wanted to thank the members of the councils and people who stopped by for the EMS open house. It was a great afternoon. Mother Nature turned out to operate and so we had a great time then. Activity wise, we're actually over 12% year-over-year in activity and of course the joke is, and the summer hasn't even started yet. The interstate, which I think a lot of you are aware of, you've seen some of the publicity on it, we have had, and when I say we, not only within the Edgerton Fire Protection District, but south of us, we're working really close with Jamesville and Milton and then Cambridge and Cottage Grove. So in the, in the entire section of the zone, basically, activity has been up year-over-year and the severity of the activity has been up year-over-year. We've had five vehicle events, seven vehicle events, nine vehicle events involving semis and tankers and all sorts of things. So, over the weekend, and I commend the DOT for taking some proactive action, they're bringing the speed limit in the zone down to 55 miles an hour to try to cut down on the severity of what we're dealing with. The complexity of them has been, is really difficult because when something happens, even a simple two-car, but when something happens, getting to it is the impossibility. So one of the things that we've done, as I said, working very closely, and it actually goes all the way down to Lloyd, so Lloyd, Jamesville, Milton, Edgerton, Cambridge, Stoughton, and Cottage Grove, we automatically start two departments and we're referring to it as bi-directional response so that we can try to get somebody to the scene to assess, you know, number of injuries, severity of injuries and those sorts of things. So the departments are working really well together, trying to deal with it, but it's, it's been a challenge. We were out there three times on Friday alone, just for, for reference.
Just in the morning, wasn't it?
Well, yeah, which was actually strange. I mean, Chris is right. Normally we expect that, normally starts around 3, 4 o'clock, you know, and as, as our visitors are coming north. Yeah, but Chris is right, I mean, we had, we had three in the morning on Friday alone.
Yeah, I was on it that Friday morning, it was, it was crazy.
We're doing, we're doing what we can. We realize, I mean, because Tom and this guy has an awful lot of challenges, I always kind of like, I'll digress for half a second, the state patrol will tell you, they do not shut the interstate down. And our joke always is, it shuts itself down. Yeah, it just, it becomes gridlocked and it becomes gridlocked in both ways, which dumps a lot of traffic either off on 59, off on 73. So I know we cause them a lot of problems, but we're dealing with it the best we can. Other than that, a lot of you will remember, a little over a year ago now, we did an open meeting for everybody, all, all municipalities, all five of them, this doesn't make up the district, on our 20-year capital plan. We were sort of laid out how this was gonna play out, you know, from capital requirements so that there was some predictability for municipalities over the next, you know, 20 years. And we'll continue to update that, obviously, it would be a rolling 20-year plan. The other meeting, we're gonna do a special meeting with the board to look at just the 2018 projects. I can tell you, unless there's some kind of surprise, we'll probably be a little under, so, in the morning, yeah, we'll be a little bit under what we were projecting for the 2018 requirements. And I want to give a very special thank you to our volunteer association. One of the reasons that the capital requirements are gonna be quite a bit lower this, or lower this year than what we anticipated, the association has donated over $63,000 to the district over $63,000 to the district in the last 12 months, and done some very, I mean, it helped us with some very sizable projects that have really taken some of the pressure off of that budget. So, that's a nice compliment to the association. One of the reasons, as we started the EMS Association, we, what we're now doing is we need to help them build their fundraising dollars back up, because they have depleted quite a bit out of those reserves that they had for donations. But that's going to help us with capital plan, and then we will lay out our capital projects. It's the roof, some of the windows, and the doors, and all that.
Yeah. So, the items like the Fireman's Festival, that's one of the biggest fundraiser events. So, people going to that and helping to contribute to that, bless you, is a, is a big one.
I know. We commented on it when we were talking about the paramedic upgrade. We had an anonymous donation through the association, $10,000, to help us with the startup costs for moving towards a paramedic service. And that covered literally 100% of the discretionary startup costs for the drugs and everything that have been purchased. So, that's been a great, we've had great community support and a lot of positive things.
Randy, you and your crew are doing a great job. Thank you. That's it for fire.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, what?
Thanks. Thanks to both of you. Public Works Committee.
Well, we had a brief meeting tonight, and we discussed two of the things that were covered under finance. We discussed the crack filling services for the streets and parking lots, and the veterans building awning projects.
All right, thank you. Next item is to consider approving the third reading and adopt City of Edgerton Ordinance 04-18, amending Section 6.03, Municipal Judge of the City's Charter Ordinances.
I'll make, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider a request to close the parking lot by the depot on June 9th for an auction. Picture on the back there, drawing of...
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve closing.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
It'd be good to go down there and check out that building. It's one of the oldest, where else is?
What's in that?
All kinds of stuff.
You'd be surprised.
Like good stuff?
A whole bunch of old antique stuff and everything. I was in there a couple of years ago.
Antique gold makers?
I think I saw something Lincoln slept here.
A lot of exhibit-worthy items in there as well, and they're fearing they have to park with many of those, just to make the auction a success. And I will be abstaining just because I'm on that committee.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Present.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider a request to lift hiring freeze for part-time Police Department Administrative Assistant positions.
Could I ask some background on this?
Our part-time has given notice, it's July, but her husband got a job transfer, so they're moving out of state.
Okay.
And she thought she should go with. I denied the request.
Well, I don't know.
I'll sue those in Coatesburg.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to lift the hiring freeze for a part-time Police Department Administrative Position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor, all the person and staff reports. A couple of things. I'd like to congratulate Mike Gregory on his 400 wins in baseball, and hope he gets a few more yet this year. The Edgerton golf team has had a fairly good year, and the track with Ashlyn Orne and Brock Zartman doing very well. And then, see, a bunch of the crossing flags are out. Personally, I haven't seen anybody use them yet, but that's just me. You have?
Have seen them, yeah.
Like to thank everybody who's helped put those together, and got them out there, and suggested places to put them. I mean, on streets.
I have one photo of someone that, actually, of a flag that got deposited in a waste bin, and put it in the appropriate canister, so...
We think we know why that happened, because there was no canister there, and they were crossing side streets. So, now we're going to put a canister up for them.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I was talking to the mayor before the meeting there, and we've had quite the wonderful things with the sports in town. Like you mentioned, the golf, and, you know, the track, and basketball. And we have a city employee, her son, Wendy's son, was doing really good for the baseball team also. And it was a good Veterans Day observations, memorial services for last week, and Edgerton and Fulton was just tremendous. And speaking of that, there was a lot of people from this area, I don't know how many, but were involved right after the June 6th D-Day operation overlord back in 19, June 6th, 1944. So, there was, you know, some people from this area were involved with that. So, I'd like to give them the thanks, and the families, and grandchildren, and so forth, for that effort that they did for us.
Anyone else?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.